I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular April Funkley Business Meeting of Milton Town Council. Uh, I'm giving you a reminder that the cemetery board is having a meeting tonight at seven, so if anyone wants to leave, feel free to go, because I know, I think they're voting on
Yeah, fires.
Offices tonight at the, maybe it'll be over at the church in the basement. Alright, uh, first off, I want to kind of congratulate the fire department for staying open on Monday all day and taking care of us, you know, during our eclipse and making sure we were safe. And then I want to thank Matt for patrolling during the day, keep everything safe during the eclipse. And as far as I know, there weren't any events that, negative events that happened during this whole time, so we're good on that. Alright, we'll look at old business. Um, we're still missing several residents on the Reach Alert program. So if you know anyone or you're not on the Reach Alert, you can either contact the clerk's office for the information, and it's been posted on Facebook time and time again, but there's still a lot of people, and everybody has a phone, so I'm sure you can get on. The, uh, park board boot drive has been rescheduled for April thirteenth, which is Saturday, and will be starting at eight AM until whenever, and this is weather permitting again. Also, the AED replacement. Amy's printed the cost sheets, and we need to upgrade, replace the now discontinued AEDs that we have.
Here's the original, the, um, the one from Centiles, and then here's the one, um, let's forget it. There's Granger. Emergency hazard products is this one.
Like she said, ours are discontinued, but we have now. Which one were we saying was the most popular when we were talking about those the last time, do you remember?
Centiles, because they were built for, like, they had to go over on Milton Street and they had to use them. Had they been able to call Centiles, they would have brought pads immediately to them, or next, depending on the times. But they had the per, uh, Devon Zabel purchased the pads because we have no other avenue.
Not season.
And they were eighty-three dollars for the pads. And then the contract with Centiles, all that's included, they'll replace the pads.
Oh, yeah, that was the...
Yeah. I thought I was pushing Centiles, but...
So that would be two for this building and two for fire station.
And then one for the road.
Yeah.
So why do we need two for this building?
Yeah.
The police department and right there.
This for building?
No, is that what I wrote on there?
This is two.
I was going on all three.
I saw for two for this building, two for the town hall.
So the one in the police car would be, they would bring it in, whoever was on duty, they would bring it in, and the next car would take it out? Yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't stay in the building?
No, it would, I would then, what, no one's putting cars?
Probably, but that would wash it away. Which one for you?
That's quite the one we're asking, that's the one we don't.
Yep.
Are you going to want to use that one again now, don't we?
They said that...
Or they said it really?
They, when you say they said, that's, everybody wants you to go with it, that they, yeah.
Yeah, because they're making their own stuff.
So we're already working on them, everything else? Things working on them, yeah?
Well, we don't know some of it, or some of it, I don't know. Which one do you think?
They're all expensive. I just don't remember which one it is. Would you say some silver dollar a month?
I think Phillip has this. Do you have the quote?
That one was seven hundred something.
How often do you use them? Honestly? A month?
I never use one.
It's one of the things, best to have one and not have one, need one, not have one type thing.
If you don't have one, then need it.
Yeah. But you get a cheaper one that would hold up longer. Well, definitely a possibility, what you're saying is, it's the battery, I mean, it is what it is with a couple of battery, everything.
Because these are only, that's the battery.
I think, the last time they attempted to use one was on Milton Street. Whatever, that's going to pass away.
What kind was it?
Ranger.
The silver one?
Yeah.
This don't have a, okay, this is just permanent, this don't have a breakdown, right? Or this here, this is the one that everything?
I don't even need to have this, this is a separate meeting.
They're going to just talk this over at a workshop.
That's not a lot, that's a hundred and ten different models.
And I just wonder if, would you have to throw it for this, take it off this apartment? As the other part of the apartment?
Probably, place department, probably the fire department.
I know, I mean, if they throw it like this, they probably, the bill payment at seventy-three, something like this. They spark it, we have a third, we have a third, they would have a pay. We'll table it until Monday?
We'll table that. Alright, we'll be receiving quotes to erect the old bridge sign, which will be placed out here on the southeast corner of the office parking lot out here, and we're looking at getting a stone mason, is that what you? And mounting that sign in a stone, I think it'll be nice.
With flagpoles attached to each?
Yeah, we'll have the flagpoles attached to it. So we haven't got the quote, we've got, no?
It'll be stopped in the days, and I'm just letting you know, I forgot you, but...
It's hard to find a stone mason or whatever that's...
I've looked everywhere, I just don't do them anymore.
Alright, a decision needs to be made on the bulk water fill station that has to be installed at the pump station. After reviewing it, it has been determined to be hazardous for entrance and exit of the location. If the decision is made to have it installed, we will receive a credit of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars to our contingency monies. This will belong to us, and if we decide to install it at either, at either a different location or a safer one, it can be installed later. If we decide to have it installed, the total cost will be seventy-four thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which is and will be taken from the grant monies, and this issue needs to be voted on.
Yeah.
Are we going to vote on that tonight?
Preferably, because Whitney used to know if we're going to do it or not.
What say you?
Whitney came down and went down there with Bruce and understood that if there was a tractor or whatever getting in and out of there, this is not safe.
This is for the non, like, not a, I don't know.
Fill station.
Before it reaches the system.
I'm not even sure. Is it before it reaches the system here? Is it before it reaches the system, is it potable or not possible?
It's not potable, because it's for crop-solder that's pouring ahead of the treatment.
Oh, for people that have a total tank or something?
It's for farmers, makes the typical stuff.
Does it get used that much?
Well, they do, yeah. Says you strip all the way back to the farm.
Where do we have a hydrant that doesn't have, doesn't have chlorine in it?
It would be before the pumps down there.
Yeah, they can't take it through, they can't take it through the pump house to move it on the other side. They would, that was one of the things that they were down there talking about, because they would have to go through the building, and we don't have the chlorine gas river to make sure that it didn't get all wet.
I mean, you could, you could take, have the farthest pump there to the east by garden, or whatever.
It's just the fact of getting in and out of there, if it was just a little bit deeper into their woods, it'd be okay.
Well, for several farmers, it doesn't matter chlorine or not to rain, it's like, it doesn't matter.
So if that was the case, your best bet would be go up to by the water tower.
It's an option, I can offer it.
Would that be easier to get to?
Yeah. That was looked at years ago. As an option.
All I see, I have a meeting with them on Monday, all I see.
And that's, if that's an option of...
If that, price the water a little higher, but account for the chemicals, you use it.
Water's hotter.
We have the plant, because you're treating it now, what if it's other?
It's treated by the time it gets to water tower.
Right.
Looks like they're trying to make the water hotter.
A lot of it's really water hotter.
Wouldn't you think it'd be, we'd make more money if we was to sell bottled water? Then you'd get like pool companies that fill pools.
I don't know, I would check the farmers, but we really isn't getting much further than that. The farmers didn't matter, so...
No, they didn't matter. I would think, because, like, pool companies, they don't want, they would pop the water, so, yeah.
And then you have people, their wells go dry and they don't want water, so you, so you don't want to, not have your water in their, their wells.
I would say do it worse pumping bottled water perfectly.
That sounds like pretty good.
You probably have to change the fencing a little bit, move it back, get more room to get in there, but depends off, depends on how it's set up.
Would be a lot of it put inside the fence.
That would be outside the fence. I would say you wouldn't let them in the fence.
It'd be on, right now.
But maybe you have to move the fence back to get more room to pull in, it's been a while since I looked at it.
So you'll talk to them Monday?
I will.
Alright, we're moving along. Amy's talked to Mike Klein Peter and to Whitney Whiten Binner. In regards of the time that Bruce and Teddy have been assisting with the water maintenance that Lykins and SLB have incurred, along with all the parts that these teams have borrowed, Amy has proposed that these monies be returned to the town. This will also include the urgent water testing that Bruce has taken either to Muncie or Connersville. She's been meeting with Lykins and SLB on Monday, she will be meeting with them, and give them an update on our next meeting, so we more or less feel like they should reimburse Bruce and Teddy for the hours that they've been, you know, given to them. Plus, when he has to take that water to Muncie, it's a good hour and back, and they need to reimburse our gas and, and the testing fee or whatever, so we'll be dealing with them Monday on that issue too. A hundred and forty-four cam strap, is that how you say it?
Yeah.
Cam strap meters have been installed, and this month those that have them will be red. We do not understand that this, we do understand that this has been a difficult process this month, but we're working extensively with them to get the correct changes to all the residents, so please be patient. We're having to enter everything from the new meters back into the computer to do the billing, and that's what our issue with the billing has been, because everybody that has a new meter is not accounted for until they get put back in the computer. And with, speaking of that, just another reminder that please don't flush anything down the toilets that's not, well, don't, even if it says not biodegradable, I wouldn't flush anybody.
The basket, the basket was ordered.
Yeah.
And it's coming from Winchester, so now it's locked away. I mean, it's been out there, I, the, uh, the guy, the gentleman told Bruce, and he might have to reach out to somebody else because they couldn't guarantee what's going to be here.
And, and we're on a wing and prayer until it gets there, because if somebody flushes a bunch of stuff down again, it's going to get clogged, it's going to get clogged back up again.
Well, even tissues, Kleenexes are just as bad.
It, you know, taking into consideration how far this has got to travel, it's not just, it's not like in a big city flushing something down the toilet, and you can get by with flushing, figure stuff down, but going as far as it goes from here, you just can't flush anything but toilet paper down.
Bruce broke it down to the thirteen houses that are attached to that, and we're putting a letter together to send them as just to tell them, please do not narrow it.
Narrow down to where it's coming from, so, um, can't escape, can't escape forever. Alright, so, um... Scott, did you and Devin have something?
Devin said he was going to try to, to talk about the AEDs.
Uh, he had a little. Um, I'll leave out the Devin, he's the whiz on that, so. I did turn it in along the runs to that basketball, that's what I gave you guys.
Yeah.
Friday, I noticed, some, we gotta start looking, something in the future. We gotta work it till Friday night, scrubbing floor, the bed floor, and it's cracking off badly, and there's areas where it's starting to sink. So that floor is outdone, and that's going to be expense.
Well, there, you, there's like, we, we can program that, because it, just, whatever, there's a void underneath it. You just gotta form up the way, we do it all the time, we use foam.
For a lot of that stuff, I believe.
Pretty cool.
Something's going to be done in the future, because something bad would happen. It's like water, trip fall, get hurt. That's just something we'll bring up in the future, in the future, hopefully.
Okay.
CPR classes was Sunday.
Yeah.
And then we turned out, and all of our guys passed or not certified, wasn't wanting to be.
And how many, how many, are we, we got certified now?
All of me, and Rich.
It looked like a good turnout.
Uh, maybe so.
Alright, we'll move along to the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. You want to take a quick minute, look over the, the... Mark's reading. And just as you're looking over that, I'll remind you that we've had, we're having some good things from our ordinance enforcement. South Street's looking really good, and a couple of the other people that we've contacted that were in violation are, are getting out of violation, are, are out of violation already, and they're paying attention, you know, we've got their attention, so we'll just keep pushing forward.
While you're doing that stuff, I'll go ahead and do mine.
Okay.
Uh, this was brought to our attention when the meters, when we were doing the system for the meters. In the past month, when putting in the meters, the town is having to solve, it was brought to our attention that we have been charging water bills wrong, and in accordance with the ordinance, as Dwight has mentioned before, there should be a right-to-serve fee on these meters. With that being said, the town lost roughly ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents just in 2023. And from the, from the date that it was approved and signed by the board and put into ordinance, we've lost five hundred thousand dollars, which is a part of the reason that we've had to be given money to pay the bill, because we didn't have it. The best idea to fix the right-to-serve fee is, is to fix the right-to-serve fee and move forward. Otherwise, our town waterworks could soon be a thing of the past. An outside company could come in and offer us a couple of million dollars to buy us out, which sounds great, but they will immediately raise the water bills. If this, if this were to happen, the new water bills would be much higher than the service fee, not including, we would still have the sewer and trash bill. So we need to really follow the ordinance. And I just need you to tell me to follow the ordinance, but that's going to be an increase on the bill.
Not much.
Not twenty dollars, twenty dollars.
A little more?
No, just one.
No, just the, the base?
The minimum, we could raise it twenty dollars.
Probably need to go to the last audit that I did, did on our treatment plan. Is there something that they're going to want to change? I mean, we changed it about eight years ago, we upgraded it quite a bit. It was, it was for safety of employees, wasn't, the water was okay, it was employee safety issues, but...
So I need to get, I need to do an update?
Yeah, from Carolyn Chapel that I did, that would be good, just to make sure there's something else coming down the road that we need to be aware of before it hits us.
Now, that's not, that's not based on calendar.
No, that's just the base.
That's just the, like, everybody has a minimum?
Okay.
No, you've been in them, so you got twenty dollars.
Okay. It's not, it's not, not been accepted well, I mean, I, I, it's not accepted well with us.
It's not accepted well with you.
But if someone else were to come in and take over, we'd be at their mercy for everything.
Except for trash and sewer.
Yeah, we could control the trash instead.
And then you'd have that bill on top of those.
Some of those people don't take care of the water lines.
The, the thing that really, we gotta think about is, it's, I know, it's very convenient that we have it right here, because if something was to happen, we got Bruce and Teddy that we can call, and they can come in and at least assess it, fix it, or we get people here the very next day. It could take two, a lot longer than that if you got bought out by a bigger company.
Yeah, the biggest complaint with our system has always been that the chlorine injection is in a pit about fifteen, twenty feet below ground, and it's been there since nineteen sixty-three.
On my list.
When you look at the things climbed down in, I wouldn't hang on to them. You're going to need a hoist, and you're going to have to have fresh air, because you're, you're like, closed area if the chlorine line beats while you're in there. It's not a good thing.
Not at all.
Probably like phase this amount in, or is that just?
Yes. But we gotta be able to phase it in, I gotta, I just have to put the numbers together, we gotta be able to phase it in and stay current with, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to get the numbers correct, so it could be a little less than twenty dollars, or it's just, I mean, be patient. That's all I ask, I'm trying to figure it out.
We probably don't know what the electric charges are, how they've changed from the time cra, you've done similar.
I know, yeah. So there's a lot of things to take into consideration, just be patient, and I, that probably is, it's on my, on my to-do list.
So should we wait until after that meeting to figure out, um, until they come and get the audit?
With Carolyn?
Mm-hmm, I mean, like, before we...
Yeah, I'm going to see when she can get here, and we'll sit down and go over everything and see.
Because we don't want to keep on raising that one month, and then two months later have to raise it again, yeah, six months from now, raise it again.
I know that a lot of them phase, like, okay, this year you're going to raise it, whatever, and then the next year, and then the...
It's like, two percent this year, three percent next year, three percent.
So that's a little bit more to take into consideration, just the street, extra point all over the building, so...
That's what I'm thinking right now.
Okay, so having looked over the minutes, I entertain them. We make a motion to approve the minutes, do I hear a motion? All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Alright, I'll make, uh, I'll entertain a motion that we pay the claims from last month. Everybody had a chance to brush up a little.
I don't have the minutes, I don't, I don't have the minutes.
I have those right here.
Yeah, I have everything right here.
The newspapers don't want it.
On the way back.
So I'm just going to keep it, when it comes to me, then I know.
Anything stand out that anybody's concerned with?
I'm on it.
Yeah, I think it balanced out pretty good this time. Make a motion to approve. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, before you adjourn, I just wanted to tell everybody that today marks the hundredth day.
So it's like a thousand?
Yes.
One hundred days.
Um, just a few things that we've accomplished. Uh, we started the year with twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-six cents in delinquent water sewage and trash thrown, and as of today, we are at four thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-three cents.
Tax checks.
Yeah, perfect timing, perfect timing. Um, we have a lot, a couple, few people that have signed agreements, and they're following the agreements as they promised, and it's really going very well. Um, we continue to work closely with the police and the fire department to help them with all the things that they need to ensure that their safety is top priority as they serve our community broadly. Updating our work environment so that we can implement a safe and secure office so that we can move forward with our residents and employees, important information, protect them from all evil. With a complete IT system overhaul and security upgrade, identified multiple security, to, to identify multiple security incidents and intrusions, that has now come to a complete halt. The Flood family really, really did a great job, I was very pleased. If I call, if I message them or call them... If I call, if I message them or call them, they need let us in. And as soon as we let them in, we group them. They're, they're really nice people. And, uh, we're also working on updating the employee handbook and town ordinance book if they are updated and in desperate need. Taking all things in consideration as the need arises. This has been a process with tons of conversations. It will continue as we move forward to the end of our terms. Congratulations.
Good job.
And then I want to say that we ask for prayers for Dwight. He has surgery in the morning and we pray for John Nolan. He's great battle.
Probably is home.
He's home?
He's home.
Good.
He's doing a little better.
And when I talked to Sammy two days ago, she was concerned.
So he's been off to a little bit.
So if I had to just keep him in your prayers, that would be appreciated.
Well, all right, Dwight said that. Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn for tonight?
Are you nervous or like, I don't have anything to go over personally.
Let's take a motion to...
That one old paper you had, I wanna, I do wanna look at that real, just real briefly. This railroad property.
Oh, yeah.
And do we know where we're at with the park, the matching of the funds for the park?
We are really, really close. She's gonna get all that stuff put together and then she's gonna send out a reach alert to let everybody know where we stand right now, but, um, I know that Saturday? Saturday, she just stopping up the mail and came straight to my house. She said, please go with me to come here. Uh, she had almost fourteen thousand dollars in checks. So I came with her, we put it in the safe. But she'll get a total of all the numbers and stuff tomorrow. That's what she's gonna be working on.
Well, the envelopes have to be entered paternically or they don't know you've got them. You gotta get matched. If you don't, yours is empty.
Of course, she's diligently working hard on it.
What is that paper?
Yeah, and the envelope.
Anyway, we're getting some complaints about that railroad track deal. And, uh, to clarify things, RMW Ventures LLC, which company we represent is not now nor has ever been the owner, leasing, nor the operator of the railroad track in question. However, an affiliated company, C N N C Railroad LLC, was the leasing and the operator of this rail line until the fall of 2021. Second, the C N N Railroad released the rail line running through Milton from its underlying owner Norfolk Southern Corporation. However, our records show that the lease by C N N C Railroad is terminated by mutual agreement in 2021. Their, their firm no longer represents the C N C Railroad. And to the best of their knowledge, the C N C Railroad entity no longer even exists. Thus, any inquiries regarding the tracks in Milton would best be directed to the Norfolk Southern Company. And we've got a copy of their headquarters address and...
In contact.
In contact.
Let the officials cut them out.
This is ongoing.
That's all the history that I've been...
Issue. So we're working on it, you know? People that are having, you know, issues with going over the tracks and stuff, we're...
They're not any scrappers. Well, it's a trip hazard.
Oh, yeah.
It's your picture.
Okay, so I just want to get that put out so that when I do entertain a motion. Or I can open the floor if you guys have got something. If, if anybody wants to leave and go to the summertime meeting, feel free because I'm not, I won't hold you back.
I'm not dying to go there.
I'm not dying to.
I do have a question. Are we going to receive the utility bill this month because of all of this or not?
Fingers crossed.
And is it still due on the same day?
Yeah. The fingers are crossed. It's, there's three, and three of us working on it. It's Keystone, Camstrade, and us. And they're catching, we're catching, they catch each other, we catch each other. So it's just, as soon as we can get all of, everything entered in, everything's entered into Camstrade. Now, once we enter everything into Keystone, then we can run.
Okay, you crossed your fingers like...
I'm hoping, sure. We're hoping. It's just a matter of taking, sitting there at the computer and being able to just enter all the numbers.
But if I don't get a bill, then I don't have to pay it by the fifteenth. Am I speaking correctly? Well, that's why I asked.
Just call me. That's, every, we are waiving all late fees because of it. So whatever your minimum bill is, that's what it is.
Okay.
And Heather, just call, because Heather will be able to tell you exactly what it is.
Okay. I, I just wanted some clarification since it's a big problem.
I had to enter in probably a hundred and, a hundred and seventy-seven, serial numbers, account numbers, and addresses, names and addresses. Then, now, we have to enter in the meter reads on the old meters. And then, then once Bruce goes out and does his read, we have to make sure that the whole system shares the stuff. And then we're gonna, if it's sharing and it's correct, we can move forward.
Then we'll get, we'll get better real quick after that.
Yeah.
So what about, um, the checks from last month?
She's taking those tomorrow. I promise.
I've been hearing that.
I promise. She's taking them tomorrow. Our system in this transition has went down like six times. And it, I got hacked, then Heather got hacked. It's just been a very stressful month.
Yes.
I will say.
So there will not be no late fee because we have, we have to give the customers fifteen days.
It's not their fault.
Right, and we have to give them fifteen days from the time they receive a bill.
Yeah, it's not their fault.
Run that down, Jim.
But we can call and...
Oh, yeah, you can call, yeah, yeah.
Because ones, no, mine's...
Yeah, you can call.
Okay, okay.
Hey, I got a question.
All right.
Did, did we have to buy them electronic, uh, speed limit signs?
We're waiting on the state.
Waiting on...
Waiting on the state to approve the location. Once, he, uh, Tom has left several messages, I've heard of myself, with Mr. Redder. And we're just waiting on him to get back with us to approve both ends of town.
So we've got the things that they sit down in?
Yeah, we have it all. We're just waiting. Yeah, we're just waiting. It's out of our hands now.
Yeah, we have to approve if we put it on a state road. But like, if we put them east and west, we put them over one of them.
Like down at Ridge?
Yeah.
Connersville Street.
And I'm thinking to move them around a little bit. They don't have to stay permanent in one position.
And he has, there's enough holes to where we can...
Circulate it around.
Be said that we wanted them on Main or Connersville or where, that and the Main.
How many do we got?
We have eight posts.
Two signs.
Two signs, so we can set the eight posts up and then circulate the two signs.
Yeah, the posts go down in the ground and we can just move them.
They're just like old dirt.
Yep.
There's some where...
We only have two signs.
Two signs.
But we have eight posts.
Yeah, they leave theirs in the same place most of the time.
Two signs with the ability to have eight different locations.
Yes, right. Thank you. Yeah. But...
That answer your question pretty much?
Yeah, we made it. Right.
Well, all right, we're...
No, I mean, I got a permit to allow, we're gonna put a banner across State Route One for my...
Oh, we gotta have that?
They're gonna measure it tomorrow. I talked to Teddy when he came in. He was out mowing. So when he came in, I sent him to measure and I told him what the exact, what he told me.
Yeah, in dots and we had a document we have to fill out just to know when it's going up, when it's going down.
And anyone that wants to help with the boot drive?
Yeah, you wanna help with the boot drive? Feel free. We'll be right out there.
Weather permitting?
Yeah, weather permitting. If it's freezing? It's raining? Not this good.
It's like seventy degrees.
Nice.
Just non-zero, you know, the thermal side.
I'm gonna stay on. What are we doing?
I gotta turn out here.
Well, I guess as far as the bicentennial, we have a boot track that's gonna be here. We have five guest speakers. It's gonna speak, seems to be moving along pretty well.
We have several people that have purchased white cups and everything. We have a list of people that have...
Are there white serving cups?
The green cups should be here probably next week, the Sharpshooter cups. If you don't know what happened was, we ordered Sharpshooter cups and... And I took an Epp Warsh cup first night and when you put it on the counter, I said, what happened to all the lettering? Everything just fell off.
Just washed right off.
So the curing process of the ink was not where it's supposed to be. And it's been corrected and we're getting a hundred percent new cups. And I'm stuck with all the old cups.
But there's no charts for the...
They don't want them back.
No charts for the old cups. They don't want them back, so...
They're just gonna be current green cups.
If you set them on a shelf and don't touch them, they'll be pretty much no longer cups. If you don't rub off them on...
I mean, I, I ran through the green cups today through the dishwasher and eighty percent of the lettering and all that was missing. I mean, they're not dishwasher capable. But they are being replaced. They're making it a priority where McCready gets them from, it's outsourced that they use.
For once, I blame my milk water.
Did they write through the paint?
Actually, your oil on your skin was enough to take them off.
Oh, yeah.
And these were the ones with the Sharpshooters on them, the ones that...
Everybody was.
Yeah.
It's like just canvas tents, can't put, very anti... For your skin, we can do.
Are we gonna get one of the marabou signs like we had down at Far House telling people what's going on? Strawn had boot drives the other day. I talked to one of them guys. They didn't do no good. They had no signs telling them what it's for.
Would you like to make the donation? Would you like to make the donation?
Is that...
People go by the town and see someone standing down the middle of the street.
They think it's an emergency.
They had one five...
They made some great...
Do they want to have a party?
Well, you saw the signs in the driveway.
So they made signs.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
They'll, they'll be out there with us.
Yeah, maybe what earlier, like a...
You want a sooner sign?
You know what I'm talking about. You know, that goes along with...
It does, it does.
When I went to Florida, we stopped in Georgia
It's dry rolling.
At a place that the fire department was having a pork chop sale.
Oh, yeah.
We seen the sign. You don't see the sign...
Was it a, was it the plastic sign or was it the, the LED light sign?
It was just a regular arrowboard.
Like our, all of us, probably just terror rated.
Yeah, that's what I asked Richie about. It's just tearing.
Yeah, move off.
Why you let William stay on the railroad track the dog?
Kid's racing us apart.
Kid's respelling stuff.
We'll put it on Facebook and...
There's a lot of... The movie name, now we put a gospel thing. Who's going out with who, who doing what? We don't get on...
I really don't agree with you.
So the old folks, you know, you don't know what's going on.
I'd like to get, I'd like to get one of them, act like the, the actual LED, you know, sign. We are working on a...
Better get all the boots out there.
It's just, it's just like that, whatever you got stopped by a while ago, Milton or whatever, we're not on it.
The reach alert?
Reach alert?
We're not on it.
You can get that, you can put that on your phone.
That's on your phone. Yes, you are.
Well, you need to get on it.
We're not smart enough to get on or figure out what's...
It's a text. It's a text.
It just gives you the text.
Text reply, a text reply.
Well, you gotta, you gotta let somebody help you fill out the...
No, I do. No, I, for reach alert?
Yeah.
I do it.
Tomorrow. I've never gotten...
I will check it tomorrow, Sarah.
I've never got one, one done.
Are you back on it, Sarah?
She's...
So do you want a text? You might have been set up for email. Do you want a text?
I get email, I...
I say I get, I get both, yeah.
I get both.
I get all of them. I'll look at it tomorrow. So stop here tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, I don't much email.
As far as the bicentennial, we've got like three hundred and ninety some flyers coming out for those and that will have information on there about the bicentennial.
And that'll lead to go outside the city one?
They'll go outside the city. It's gonna cover people in the township as well. Because historically, in the things that I've worked on and fundraising, we got more money from township than we did citizens and donations.
Well, we're gonna take into consideration, Milton is an old town and there's a lot of old people that can't afford the...
Exactly right.
They can't afford the twenty dollar rates on water bills. They're on fifteen. And that's what we're gonna run into. We're gonna price things out. And I understand you guys do it, but you're gonna price things out where people's gonna sell, move on. I mean, they can't, they can't afford twenty dollars here, twenty dollars there.
Right.
When they're only making, say, seven hundred dollars a month starting with and they gotta buy groceries, insurance and... All that. I mean, it needs to be looked into how we can get something going, put money in that. I mean, it's just like you're talking about, you've got all this money on the water. Are you leaving, it should be left into the water and not go to nothing else.
The only thing, the only thing that I've spent any money on is water.
I mean, that's what it's for.
Yes.
It ain't, it ain't for...
It's not sewer, it's not trash, it's water.
Salary.
No.
It, it's for the water only. So if we've collected that much money, we got a little in there, you know? Where you shouldn't have to raise it very much, you know what I'm saying?
That's just raising it to match the ordinance.
You know?
If we let the ordinance go indefinitely, the government will step in and that's just...
The big box, water companies will be right in here, offer a couple of million dollars. And then it'll raise and we won't have any control over it at all.
We ain't got much control over it now.
Well, we're probably...
Trying to get the control.
When it comes to billing and cost, you need to itemize everything. You don't itemize, we know we have chlorine or fluoride coming out of a water plant, but what does it cost?
Well, I mean...
I mean, you need to ask us...
Has anybody, it's just like that chlorine that you're talking about. Has anybody ever checked in to see what you can get through somebody else for?
Have you?
I mean, you, stuff like that, you gotta do some research and see where you can get it cheapest you can.
My personal opinion, I think our biggest problem is the pumps. They're three phase pumps for a well. They're old. They're put in back in sixty-three, sixty-four type thing.
They're guzzling electricity a lot more than they should be guzzling.
Yeah, but the problem is that I see, and I've sat there, we don't put back emergency funds for that to replace that.
That's exactly right.
Correct.
You know, I mean, we know it's gonna...
We don't even have the water meters.
We know it's gonna go bad, but we've never put nothing back.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
And that's what we're hoping to start doing.
You know?
It seemed like the response has been, we don't maintain it, but we fix it when it's broke. Or we attempt to fix it when it's broke. That has to go away. Or we attempt to fix it when it's broke. That has to go away.
I look at Stan Backo. Are they maintaining it right? I bet not one on that board. I wonder what, is there any grease on grease shirts or is it a hydraulic spool? Are the areas checked or not?
This is why I tell my work. It's not my job to do that. That's why we have people we hire. Because if I have to go check your work, your work, your work, then why do we have those people?
Well, that's what I
We need to have a checklist turned in every so
PM that they've checked the oil before you start it, I think. If all of them started
I would say a hundred percent.
Cause everyone back there is talking about the hydraulics not working, you know? And I go down there looking, hell, do they get any hydrology on that? I mean and when the pump goes out, then you talk about more trends.
And the other is, is we turn up employees, some don't wanna do certain things. And so that doesn't help the situation. I mean, we dragged lawnmowers through Newcastle to be worked on. In some cases, they can be done right here in our own garage.
They used to be done in our own garage.
They are right now. They are right now. They just got them off base and they're out running today.
So, I mean, those are the things that, I mean, when, I know I worked on the grasshoppers on the drive train. Fifty dollars for three years versus dragging it to Newcastle and being charged hundreds of dollars
Right.
to do it.
Well, now that we don't have a cemetery, we're not gonna have the wear and tear on the mowers.
The wear and tear comes from right out there in that field.
School property. Yeah, that's school property.
Yeah, but they, they mowed for a good while up there in the cemetery and you've already got wear and tear on them, so you don't know how much time they're gonna last. And I'm saying we're gonna have to root mow in that school property for nothing. Literally, we have, we get nothing out of it.
That's where you're gonna give it to you.
What can we do?
I see it.
What can we do about that?
Give it back though. Give it back too.
That's what I say.
Yeah, that's what I say.
The, the deal on that was former council president pushed to get part of that property back. We got it back. And there's an agreement in there. If we violate certain, certain things, they would take it back from us. But in the end, like you're saying, we're paying for Boeing and all that. And they restrict us on what we can do.
We can't use their bathroom. We can't use their quarter dock.
Yeah, cause what I understand, you can't build nothing back there.
Build nothing back there, you can't have a fairer back there.
Yeah, so what's, what's the purpose? Yeah, and your biggest, for people who made the decision, was when we did a survey of park board, I would say over ninety percent of the people that was parents is, I knew what I did when I was a kid. I could go back there, nobody, something's gone on. I don't want my kids going back there, so we don't wanna play park behind the ball there. That's just like, what's that wood, I mean, you gotta, you look at the, how long it take to mow that? Four hours, four hours, four hours of their wage plus the gas. That's worth much.
And all we have is what, two dumpsters? And we can put them somewhere else.
Put them on the park table.
Right in Centridge Drive.
Easy, think about that.
I thought about it. Cause it might as well be
They don't even know. They turn around right into your yard.
I, that and they, I gotta go through what a magnet and pick up the nails. I get nailed cause people drop stuff on their trailers, yeah.
All the time. Well, that's something we need, we need to think about giving it back. Before the mowing weather gets settled.
It's a job with that contract that tell you why.
That's
We just have to have like, cause it's probably needed over to us.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking
They just
I think it's just a agreement.
Just a verbal
I can try and get you a copy of it cause I kept all
And we just tell Joe we want out of it.
Is it under ballpark? Your file and system?
All the agreements, all the agreements we want pulled.
Agree, okay.
Let's work on that by next, pretty soon.
Yeah, before
The mowing season sets in.
Probably best person to talk to would be that.
Thinking how many hours we'll save on maintenance.
Payroll.
Payroll.
Well, maybe I go back to the handbook then and mow these easements. And care for the town property.
I would rather see that.
I would do.
Field mow back then.
I'll take care of my easements. I will.
Me too.
I would be.
We did ours.
But there's some that look horrible.
When Sassy put
And it's in the handbook and then you do mow the easements.
Maybe the Alice if you grow it over and stuff it and clean it up too.
A lot of town ordinance, you know, a lot of a lot. Still can't catch the chicken head hold.
And that, did you tell, why you tell that girl? She put it down on the town when she put that out there?
I sure did. She messaged me.
She's, she put it in there.
I said absolutely not.
I bet I saw her that. She put it on Facebook. She put it on the mailbox where she comes in. Here's a warning. So and as a board, we, we did decide that the trees over there would be trimmed at the expense of the owner and the town.
So I don't know why they keep dragging us in it. They've been doing that for how many years over there in that corner? This is about the second year?
Matt was over there
Two years?
All weekend.
So do you understand the agreement? I'm telling you, it was yours neighbor.
What?
That easement over there, we're not taking those trees down. If he wants to trim them off of his trailer, he will do that at his expense.
I don't care that about it.
Just letting you know because you're over there.
Do you have any idea what the disagreement was about over the weekend that
Yes, I do. He was there for two hours. It's because the gentleman went on her property to get his car.
So that's a domestic
Two hours.
So we're all on the same page about the tree?
Oh, yeah.
How many yards have we been at?
Three a year.
Three years.
Three a year.
Non-consecutively. Non-consecutively.
And none of them for twenty-four hours, believe it or not.
You have to put the stuff away nightly on the three days of yard sales. And those three days can be designated by the town. So if you have stuff out sitting in your yard or your neighbor's yard or your other yard and it's been out there for years, it's time to get it out of the yard because three days is over.
Yarding.
That's gonna be the next one.
Oh, that's We don't need your help.
Yeah, don't
If he were to buy the old Ice House off of the Rockland, he said he would take all his stuff over there for it.
Something about the Robs here.
Amy, you wanna speak about the ordinance group that we had?
Who do what?
The ordinance group that we did.
For the bureau.
Oh, we had our first ordinance violation bureau. Yeah, the young man came in, they did, they spoke their mind. Uh myself and the Tom and the young man left the room while they discussed the what to do. And what they came up with is they gave him ninety days to keep it clean. In the, in that ninety days, if he via, gets the next violation, then he will be responsible to pay this violation that he's got right now plus the next one.
So that'll put him to seven fifty. But the kids made every effort to clean it up. I mean, if they weren't trying to clean it up, I could have understood not being sympathetic, but the kids made every effort to clean it up. And if he keeps it clean, then we've done something good.
It was, it was productive. He understood.
One bridge at a time.
He understood and he's keeping it clean. I drive by there every day, make sure.
All right, having said that, I would entertain some
Oh, what's one more thing? We have raffle tickets, sorry. We have raffle tickets that the fire department are selling. Um you have a chance to win a brand new truck. If you're interested, we have them. They're in there and they can get five dollars.
I like a ticket.
Yeah, five dollars.
Full size truck. We didn't know what kind of truck it is.
We don't name, know the name brand, but it's a full size truck.
So how does that work?
That has to be turned in by May thirtieth. It's being put on by the Indiana Volunteer Firefighters Association. It's day one. But they have tickets and they gave me some to sell, so I'm helping.
Having said that, I entertain that if anyone would make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll listen.
Okay, so
I'll go ahead, Dwight.
No, go ahead. Ladies first.
No, you go.
I second motion.
All in favor of the chairman?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.